So member.
President.
Council member, are you there?
I'm here.
Council member, are you there?
Yes, here.
You're on, but I can't hear you. Do have council member Gonzalez here. Okay. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the agenda of the City of Coachella Close Session Run Regular Meeting. The City Council, the City of Coachella, the Council City as a Coachella Sanitary District, Coachella Fire Protection District, Coachella Financing Authority, Coachella Education and Government Access Cable Channel Corporation, Coachella Water Authority and Succession Agency to the Coachella redevelopment agency. It's May 11, 2022. When soon to Assembly Bill 361, along with the Governor's State of Emergency Declaration issued on March 20, March 4, 2020. This meeting will be conducted via teleconference. Public comments may be received either in person via email, telephonically, or via Zoom with a limit of 250 words or more or less, or three minutes. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's 5:08. And I'm gonna note for the record, the attendance, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Beaman Hacito. And we'll move on to virtual public meeting resolution. Is there a motion to pass resolution number 2022-44? There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. And all those in favor.
I'm not, I wasn't able to see who.
Motion was made by Councilmember Delgado and seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Gonzalez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We'll move forward now on the approval.
Larza did not unmute. You raised. Thank you.
We'll move on now to approve of the agenda. At this time, the Council Board Corporation Attorney Man out city is being pulled. Mr. City Manager, any changes in the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are continuing item six to the next meeting.
Item six in the presentation.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the agenda with the modifications? There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We'll open up public comments. Is it public comments on close session items? Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to make some comments? See none. We'll go ahead and move to close session. The council will move to close session. We'll reconvene shortly after. All right, welcome, everybody. We're going to be reconvening back from close session. We can get our city manager back. Mr. City Manager. Carlos, we reconvene back from close session.
Yes, Seth. Thank you, Mayor. City Council made a close session on items two and three as described on the agenda. Received direction when or put away actions were taken. Thank you.
With that, we will now come back to the reconvening of the meeting. And we'll move forward on our pleasure of allegiance. I'm going to ask Mr. Odom if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, now move forward on proclamations and presentations. The Sheriff Department Traffic Enforcement Presentation. Captain. Lieutenant. Gabriel.
Is then it has on attendees. There he is.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, they had to upgrade me to panelist there. Okay, and if I can share my screen here. Okay, let me know if you can when you can see that. Can you see that presentation?
We can see it.
All right. Okay, first off, I want to thank Mr. Mayor for allowing me to do this presentation as well as the council members. I was asked about this a while back regarding traffic enforcement and traffic services from the Sheriff's Department. As you all know, City Coachella currently does not contract for any kind of traffic services. Some of the issues that we're dealing with within the city, and I've been hearing and receiving quite a few complaints, and I believe the council has also is some of the concerns are general reckless driving. One of the big concerns is speeding, traffic collisions, as well as DUIs, be that alcohol and/or drugs. Also stoplights and stop sign violations within the city. Some of the traffic statistics that I put together here, first off, we're taking from the last three years. From 2019 to 2021, we kind of combined some call types, but in total, there was 15 different call types that we calculated on. So for a total call type for 2019, we had a total of 180 DUI arrests and calls for service. And one of the big numbers I'm going to be focusing on are traffic collisions. Now, traffic collisions are broken into a couple of different categories. We have hit and runs. We have hit and run non-entries, you know, with injuries. We also have traffic collisions, non-injury, traffic collision, no details, fatalities, and a couple other traffic related calls for service. What I try to look at is in these past three years is the most common that we receive are traffic collision on injuries. And you can see according to pie chart here in 2019, we had a total 556 calls for service. I'll reference that. Now, in 2020, for the traffic collision, non-injury, it did go down a bit to 473. Now, you got to remember, we're now going to be in the COVID times starting of that. And so that's how you're going to see that reflecting. And then you can see for the various calls, service, hit and runs, injury, we're 12, non-injury, we're 239. And when you start looking at the DUI arrests, driving intoxicated, 198. Now, for 2021, starting to see a little bit more of an increase, going to 553 non-entry traffic collisions. And then drywall intoxicated, 206. Now, for the three-year total, we have for a non-injury, we have 1,582. And then for the driving while intoxicated, 584. Quite a bit for actually the three years, even in taking COVID into into account. Now, people always talk about motorcycle versus patrol car. Now, they're they're both very distinct and have different functions. Now, there is traffic services in a patrol car, but they just are not as effective when you're trying to reduce the amount of collisions. And the way that's done is through citations and enforcement of traffic, traffic related laws. So the best tool for that would be actually the motorcycle enforcement officer. So when we look at the costs of motorcycle enforcement officer, and I apologize, the for the county, we're just approved yesterday, so this has not been updated because I didn't want to change it because this was sent out to council last week. And I didn't want to change it, but there is slight change in in costs. But for a dedicated position deputy sheriff, okay, motor officer, what you're looking at is the 2021 rates and the 2022 projected rates. Now, where the traffic patrol vehicle and the traffic motor officer differ is that the motor officer, because it is a hazardous function, hazardous job to be on motorcycle, they go what we refer to as a differential pay, an hourly differential pay, which for 2021 was $1.93 an hour. The anticipated rate to increase on that was $2.03, which actually is, I believe it's gone down a little bit because the rate increase was anticipated 5%, it was actually just a little over four. So it's going to be a little less than that. I think about roughly, like I said, a little 4% for the for the increase. For where it differs between the patrol car is patrol cars accumulate mileage. Now, motorcycle wouldn't accumulate mileage because that motorcycle would be purchased by the City of Coachella. So you do not accumulate the mileage because obviously you own the vehicle. As opposed to a traffic vehicle, it accumulates miles that's built at 87 cents a mile, and that tends to add up. So you can see there is a slight difference in the red here with the pricing of a motorcycle deputy compared to just a straight traffic enforcement deputy in a patrol car. Now, as we say before, why motorcycle, not a patrol car? Like I said, motorcycle's primary function is to enforce traffic, traffic laws. So they're much more maneuverable, so they can get through traffic easier, not only to a traffic collision, not only in the case of an emergency to say you have a an incident, the YMCA, you have an incident at one of the schools. They're able to maneuver that traffic and they can respond to those kind of incidences. And they get there rather quickly, more so than actually a patrol car because obviously they're smaller. So you have a quicker response. The accessibility for them, I mean, they can drive on areas that patrol cars can't. Obviously, if they can access like on a sidewalk, something like that, they can make a access to that area as opposed to a patrol car. They're ideal for targeted enforcement in that, again, they're built to enforce traffic, traffic laws. So be that when they're equipped with radar and/or lidar, where they can get the speeders at a distance. And when they're mostly nowadays, what they do is they focus on the lidar aspect of it. And what that is, is actually a laser beam. And it identifies a specific vehicle. So it's not confused with the multiple amount of vehicles, such as when they use radar. Lidar is a different kind of radar. It's specific laser on a specific vehicle. So they're able to target that vehicle and get them and get recorded with speed. Better visibility for the officer. Obviously, they don't have the metal of the police car surrounding them. So that's pro and con because obviously the metal does provide safety for the officer in a collision. But it provides better visibility for them. They're able to look around. They're able to see what's going on around them more easily than in a patrol car. Now, motorcycle purchase impact, what that would be for for the city to purchase actually a motorcycle. What we're looking at is a BMW motorcycle. And these are estimates. They're roughly depending on outfitting, raised about $32,000. Uniforms for the officer is about 3,800. Helmets around $1,200. Those get replaced by every five years, or if there's a collision or they go down and there's some kind of damage to that helmet. Training is actually, they have to go through a two-week motorcycle training course, which is held, used to be held in San Bernardino. CHP holds one, Orange County holds one. It depends on what the availability is. Very tough course to go through. We usually provide two to three weeks of pre-training with a certified instructor prior to that deputy being sent off to that motor school. And then, so when you're looking at that, it's roughly about $37,000 to outfit that deputy and to include that motorcycle. And then mileage cost, you obviously wouldn't occur any mileage built through the Sheriff's Department because you own that vehicle. So you have to just deal with the motor fuel costs. And that's just an estimation, $300 a month, you know, $3,600 a year. So it depends. Also, maintenance. I put a rough estimate of $300 a month. That varies because obviously when you get a new motorcycle, it's under warranty. Many of the things for certain amount of time are covered under under that warranty. So there's no cost. It's just amount of time for the officer to go up there and get that repaired. And that's usually up in the Riverside area. So pretty quick presentation, but I'll address any questions the council may have.
Just, I think there's no doubt that we need this. I think it's a matter of can we afford it? And and so I I'll look to, you know, Gabe and Nathan. You know, we've added, obviously with the new rates, have you had an opportunity? Have you had a chance to evaluate what the new rates are going to be? And what does that cost ultimately to our general fund?
We got those rates yesterday, so we're doing the analysis now.
Okay, and then.
Didn't we budget for the increase?
We budget a percentage increase, but now that they gave us more realistic numbers, we can.
Okay, so then in terms of the revenue increases that we've been seeing on, I think we have a public safety CFT, if I'm not mistaken, and and we have, you know, some new developments that have come along. Particularly, I guess, Pado. We have a new houses going up with Polte's building. We've seen what's Valencia as well get built out. And so I'm trying to understand like what what are the, and maybe this is going to be for our budget presentation, but what what ultimately are those new kind of fixed increases that we're seeing, revenue increases? And and I'm trying to get to a point where we get, we need, because we do need this. It's 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 there's no doubt. The city has grown. It's growing. And the traffic that is out there right now is is bad. It's bad. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that are not obeying our traffic laws. So I I think we kind of have to look at this as a whole in the budget presentation and figure it out if we can, like, how much we can buy. Now, is it is it all or nothing, Lieutenant?
What do you mean by all or nothing?
In other words, can we buy half an officer, like in terms of hours?
Yeah, for that, yeah, because they're dedicated to the city. Yeah, it would have to be an all or nothing. Ideally, tell you the truth, it's great when they can work in pairs. But I know financially, I don't know if that's actually feasible for the city. But it's always better if they work in pairs because they kind of orbit around each other, in lack of a better term. And they're able to to work together, a specific area. But nothing says that you can't have one motor officer.
And I'll just make an observation that, you know, since you're kind of new and, you know, for the last 10 years, we've had the same service levels, but yet our cost for that service has probably increased by 50%. So we'd probably be been, we've been ahead of inflation when it comes to public safety. I don't, I don't know how we we how that's sustainable. But but it's it's something that is, you know, even when we made it, when we made a, when we passed the utilities user tax, and it was all going to public safety, it's it's gotten gobbled up very quickly and not one new service that came out of it. So it's just, it's just something to note, and it's not sure how we how we even add, but but I'll leave that to staff to look at during our budget conversation.
Lieutenant Vasquez, I know we have the total for the motorcycle purchase impact. And then is the traffic deputies, is a cost for traffic deputy higher than a patrol deputy?
If I go back real quick and reference that, what it is, the the basic cost for the deputy is the same. A deputy is a deputy. Where it changes is going to be that differential pay. Okay, so that differential pay increases, if you want to say that, the amount of the deputy, and that's, like I said, estimated at, it's going to be a little under this because the rates aren't as high as this, but it's for the new fiscal year was estimated at $2.03 an hour. In addition to that initial rate of the deputy. So the basic deputy is always a basic deputy. It just depends on, like I said, the differences between the two is if you had a deputy in a patrol car, it may theoretically cost more for that definitely in a patrol car because you're paying paying for mileage on that patrol car. And it varies on what that mileage may be.
Thank you. And and I do want to, I want to thank Lieutenant Vasquez, our Assistant Chief of Police, for bringing this through. This is something we discussed at the public safety meeting. It was brought forward by a lot of residents who obviously have addressed the speeding, the sound, the traffic violations, and I shared many experiences that I have, you know, from people taking the red light. They don't even slow down for it. They know that we don't have any traffic deputies and they they take full advantage of it. As well as I had shared an experience where there was a mother who was crossing the street. She was pushing a stroller. And in a massive truck went by who was hauling a trailer, you know, just missed her by, you know, minute maybe. And so this is definitely something that we need to have in the City of Coachella. You know, like the mayor said, it's always, you know, whether we can afford it, but it's definitely something that that we need. And so, you know, when staff is looking at these numbers, if you can look at it for one and then have an option for two traffic deputies as well.
And just FYI, two deputies is roughly $800,000, $750,000.
Not to mention the BMW.
Well, I mean, I mean, the one-time costs is.
Yeah, it was.
But but in terms of, you know, two officers for $800,000. You know, if you look at our budget, you know, say buy to any type of liquidity that the cities have. And 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 then at the rate of escalation, the way these contracts are are going will be in a deficit within a year. So those are the type of things that we need to really kind of think through. Yes, they're needed. And yes, their 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 public safety is 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 a priority and 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 but it's a matter of balancing the ship and really having dollars to do all the other things that the community asks us for as well. So that's, that's my only point, obviously.
It's 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 only an option for staff to bring forward. If they're going to bring forward for one, why not just bring all the costs for for two? But I can, I can tabulate the numbers as well. Yeah, but you know, if they're going to bring it forward, why not take a look at both of them? Doesn't mean that we're going to pass it. Doesn't mean that we're going to pass one. You know, but if they're going to bring it forwards, let's just make sure that we have all the information when it comes through.
As well as what the implications are to the overall budget. So that's a, we will look to the, we'll look to the new budget here to kind of figure out what 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 we can afford.
And thank you again for allowing me to speak today.
Move on now to interactive online Coachella development maps, Gabriel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm going to share my screen. I think you can see it. Can you see the city website?
Yeah.
So we're excited to launch this this website that's connected to the City Coachella website, which allows the public to be able to see the development that's going on in the city. In the past, we've communicated that through our developments dash reports, which is on in your consent calendar. We do have a link to it. But the way that's presented, you know, it's kind of like a matrix with details about the project, but not really any good visuals about the project, right? So so it's not really that user friendly. A lot of contractors use it to identify projects that are going on in the city and potentially identify future contracts for these development projects. So what we wanted to do was make this into a more dynamic interface on our website so that the public could engage with it, that it's more interactive and our, the public knows what's going on in the city. So we created a development map. If you go on the city's website, under Development Services, there is a link for maps located here, and you go to the bottom of the page, and we have an icon for that development map. When you click on it, you have to, you do have to click Council, but it'll take you to that interactive map. It shows a map of the City of Coachella with the city boundaries and all the different projects that are going on in the city. So this identifies the projects that are under review, approved, under construction in green, and completed in purple. So how would this work? So you could actually, you know, scroll around the map with your your mouse. You can actually access this map through your smartphone as well, navigate it through that. And this identifies all the different projects. You can identify where these projects are clustered. And so so we have one project tonight that's before the the City Council, the Tripoli Project. So you could identify, well, what's this project about? So it includes a description of the project, some details. But if you want more information, you can actually click on a link for each of these projects that provides more information. And it highlights the project on the map, which is shown right here. And if you click on more information, it'll take you to this development projects page. And you can see more about the project, identify the acreage and the contact, who's the planner that's working on the project? If you want to contact them, but also see exhibits related to the project, site plan. So it's something that I think is going to be useful for the public. You could see a lot of other development projects. Now, we don't have all the projects that are going on in the city on this map yet. What we wanted to do is place the projects that we know a lot of our community members ask about. But we are still populating this website to include all the projects going on. So a lot of like the cannabis related projects, those haven't been populated yet. So that will be our next update. You can scroll down here to see all the different projects. And these are residential, these are commercial, these are industrial developments going on in the city. So if you were just interested in residential projects, you can just scroll through this and identify kind of what's going on with that development. And, you know, it'll tell you what's going on with the development. So if you went to the Bregel project, which is just completed, you could, you know, it has a status under construction. So we'll update this map monthly, but we think it's going to be a good tool for the public and.
Pueblo Viejo Villas downtown.
It's there. Yeah. So let me take you there. So if you were going, so it's green, right? So green means a project that
is. It should be completed, right?
Yeah, it actually should be completed. So we actually did this.
The month is not.
That's supposed to be very real live.
Yeah. So it has a site plan and elevations, just if you wanted to see what the design was for that project. But but that's, that's pretty much the map, and we want to make this user friendly. So if you have recommendations.
Because this is good.
I navigated through it today, by the way, or yesterday. And it's very efficient. Of course, there's not all the developments are there. A lot of the cannabis is is missing. But it's very user friendly. And many of our residents and community members, organizations are constantly asking about developments. And they want to know who's a developer, and they want to know where that, where it's at, and what's the status of it. And so this is very promoting transparency, and so people can now connect to it directly. And I think it alleviates a lot of the wreck of the, you know, community members, you know, calling in and requesting this information so that it helps staff as well. And from what I understand, this is a zero cost program.
Yeah, correct. This is a existing license that we've had with our GIA system.
Thank you. Very nice work, Gabriel.
Well, that was an exhilarating presentation. We'll move on now to our lighting and lighting. Our lighting and landscape maintenance district outreach update for ten, thirteen, thirteen and fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna share my screen for that presentation.
Happy birthday, Maritza.
Sorry?
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Happy birthday.
I didn't know that that got out to everyone.
Everything gets out.
It's a small city, Maritza.
Yes.
Happy birthday, hopefully.
Very much.
You get.
Yes, we had a really good weekend.
We get two days of celebration in the world, Mother's Day.
Three.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. But Latino women in South, you know, they get two days.
Thank you, everyone. Um, this item is an update for the council with regards to uh, the L M Ds that have basins that are not landscaped. Um, we did come before the council in January. Identified that there was a total of six districts with those circumstances and in that presentation. The, the districts highlighted here in red um, were identified as districts that. We felt could be moved forward into uh, construction and landscaping of those. Those basins, um, going through real quick, we did um, District Ten. This was uh, the concept drawing, they're all very similar, very desert scape and low maintenance. With the intention of providing landscaping to these areas and function, but still providing a low monthly maintenance cost. So that that monthly maintenance cost once, uh, once the project is done, would still be able to be absorbed and paid for through the existing. Um, assessment in that district without any change to that, to that fee for the district. So we did meet with District Ten and in that district, we had about eighteen residents show up to the, to the meeting. Um, and primarily they were overall very supportive, they uh. Overall throughout, you'll see that the feedback for all of them is a very supportive. They'd like to see that improved and not be just. Uh, raw dirt essentially. The primary comments that I think that were received back from this district is they wanted to see some added seating. And they wanted to see if we can add a maintenance gate in the back. Um, that, this is one of the districts that constantly gets um, the block walk gets vandalized because they like to access uh, the. The back of that. Of that development through th- that gate, uh, non-existing gate currently, but they kind of make a pass through. Um, of that wall. So um, we, we will entertain that and be able to probably accommodate that with the existing um, design. And otherwise, uh, seating and adding an access gate were the primary comments um, to the concept drawing presented. We received some other feedback that we forwarded to the appropriate departments uh, for follow-up. And with that, I'm gonna move to District Thirteen. District Thirteen is located at the end of Westerfield by Avenue de la Dobe. And this one, um, we had about fifteen residents uh, participate in the community meeting. And the concept drawing shown here would include again desert scape, a walking trail, some lighting. And um, and shade trees as well as some plant material. And the cost, the cost for the last one, I apologize, was on the slide, but I didn't say it was twenty-five thousand. This one's larger. And it's a hundred and ten thousand would be the estimate for construction improvements. It could be absorbed in the monthly. Assessment for the district and the feedback from the community was that they wanted to see additional trees. Additional seating, but overall supportive of the concept drawing presented. District Fourteen, this district is Pueblo de la Paz, it's at the very end of the community. Um, and we met with them. This one um, was the last community meeting that was um. Scheduled and we did have some weather challenges. Um, the first ti- first day, we, it actually rained. Um, we rescheduled it for two weeks later. We, we sent out the postcard, we did the electronic reader board and then we had a very windy day. But all in all, between the two meetings, I was able to interact with about five different residents of that community. And the feedback um, at those meetings, um, also asked for additional seating. And um, also mentioned if we could add some additional drainage improvements to improve how quickly um, the. When we do have a rainstorm, how quickly it can um. It, it can precipitate into the ground. So um. Though, that may not be within our cost estimate here of thirty thousand, but we will include it and see how that comes back. Um, this is. A district that can absorb the monthly cost if it is a move forward. And with that, um, those, those are the feedbacks of the community at those three different districts. We, uh, the next steps would be to bid out the identified improvements and then we would return to council. Uh, with the bid results and direction with regards to award. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer questions at the council.
Oh, good work and I, I'm glad that these districts are slowly working out of. Um. The deficit that they were in, you know, and can now really afford on their own, you. To uh, to get to a decent working condition. Uh, so I, I think it's good. Now you're, are you gonna bid them as a, as a whole? And so it'll be one bid package for three projects? Are you gonna do three separate bids, eh?
I think we would do them as one because two of them are very small and one is large. It just makes more sense to then only have to manage one contract.
I, I agree. Well, good work.
Maritza, I have a question. The maintenance fee that, that you put on the different uh, trucks, is that per month? Per resident?
No, that's, that's what it would be per month uh, for the added improvements.
Oh, God.
So it would be shared by all the homes in that district.
I understood, okay.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's good. Overall, I think the residents were very, um, they showed a lot of favorites, uh, favor uh, towards all of them and so. Uh, and by the way, the day that it was raining, I went out there. And Maritza and her team were out there in the rain and I was like, are you guys gonna head out? They're like, oh yeah, we're just gonna wait here a little bit longer. In case anyone shows up and I thought. Uh, you guys do outstanding work, I have to say. So thank you for that dedication.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, thank you, Maritza, for that presentation. We'll move on now to running communications. Um, clerk, are there any running communications?
Yes, we received one email on May tenth at ten forty-three AM from Colleen Edwards with Chelsea Investment Corporation regarding item number fourteen. This email was forwarded to council and it does exceed the two hundred and fifty word, uh, word count.
Well, Colleen is here, so thank you for your email letter. Um, is there any other? No, we'll move on now to consent calendar. It is recommended that consent items be acted upon simultaneously unless separate discussion or action. Is requested by council members or the audience. What are the wishes of the city council?
I want to pull number twelve.
We're gonna pull item number twelve. Uh, can we get a staff report on item number twelve? Mr. Estrada.
Hi, members of the council, mayor. Um, is there, do you want just a summary of the report or is there any particular question?
If you give us a staff report on what's going on and then we'll facilitate a question.
Yeah, so um, the purpose of this item is to authorize the purchase of a thousand meters. These are three-quarter inch meters, primarily residential meters. Uh, we have about nine thousand meters in the system. We made a similar purchase, um. I'd say maybe about a year ago or so. And it was primarily to um, uh, begin a program to replace some of the meters that we have in the system right now that. That are uh, failing to communicate as we, as we uh, drive uh, the trucks around the city to pick up. Uh, consumption usage on these meters. So. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on how we read meters, so we have two sep- we have two separate cycles. And what we try to do is we try to um, capture uh, half of the meters in one cycle. And uh, we typically read those, let's say at the beginning of the month. And then we have another cycle that's red in the middle of the month around, uh, let's say the fifteenth of the month. And that captures um, half of the o- other side of the city. So we have two cycles, uh, the way we read meters is we. Uh, we have a, a, a software and uh, hardware that we put on our trucks, uh, the operators. And they drive around the city and they use um, the infrastructure uh, in their trucks to pick up. Uh, the uh, radio uh, signals that are being transmitted uh, by these um, A M R meters. Uh, some of these meters, the receiver, sometimes the transmitters um, on the meters, sometimes they. They don't communicate properly with the, with the receiver in the truck for various reasons. Sometimes, you know, the battery, uh. Uh, it, it dies on the, on the, uh, on the transmitter. Uh, we call it the register. Uh, sometimes, um, you know, the, the meters might be. Uh, being blocked by something where it's not communicating, but. Uh, the case is that um, when, when these meters are not being picked up by the, by the vehicles. It requires um, a non-read list to be put together. And this, this list is then read by hand. So, so every time we go out and read. There's a list of non-read, of non-read meters that then needs to be read by hand. Um, the, the meters are working. Uh, but, but it requires extra, extra steps for, for the operators to then retain that information. Uh, uh, basically read the meter by hand, provide that information to the billing department in order to. Populate the information that's required in the system to, to be able to put out bills. So we, 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 we do, uh, we've started a program where we um, are identifying these meters. We uh, once we purchase these, these meters, we create a project. Where, where we put out a project uh, for a contractor uh, to come in and systematically. Uh, replace these meters that we know uh, need replacement. Um, this, right now, we were purchasing a thousand meters with the expectation that uh. That uh, we would create a, a second phase of a project to replace more meters that we know, we know we need to replace. And what that does. Uh, essentially is it reduces. The amount of staff time that it requires for us to get through the, through the reading process and, and ultimately the uh, putting out bills to customers.
Thank you, Castle. You know, my question was more towards um. Is, are you gonna need to replace more meters and is there any additional equipment, you know, because the last time it came through, you know, when you. Uh, propose the other equipment that needed to be replaced, which was half a million dollars. And, and to be honest, I wasn't shocked by it because I know that we have. Equipment that needs to be replaced. And so my question is more is, is, are we gonna need more meters? And then is there additional equipment uh, that needs to be replaced as well in the next year, two years, three years, so we can start maybe planning for it? Uh, uh, you know, accordingly.
So, so. There are several ways that I could think, that I think we can tackle this issue, um. We have again about nine thousand meters. Um, I would say that right now. Um, we probably with, if we go and change these thousand meters. We're probably gonna have about fifty fifty. Um, fifty percent of the meters being a three G A M R. And fifty percent of the meters being these new types of meters that we're installing. So, so there's um, there's been a change in. In the infrastructure that we're putting in place since about maybe, let's say, at least four years ago or so. Where we, we've wanted to transition uh, the type of meter. So, so right now. We are, we are no longer uh, installing what we call three G A M R meters. The, the three G A M R. Is a, is a meter that receives, uh, that transmits a radio signal. And it, and that radio signal is captured by infrastructure uh, that's placed on our trucks to be able to pick up that signal. Uh, there are new types of meters that are being built. That are, are called four G A M I. And, and that's a, that's a meter that also transmits a radio signal. But you're able to capture that um, that radio signal through repeaters. And, and base stations that you put on, on power poles, you put on, you know, we kind of put some of those. Base stations, repeaters on our, on our communications towers. Um, we're working with I D to use one of their towers on, on Avenue fifty-two. Uh, we're planning to use some of the uh, the lights at the, at the Bagduma Park because they're, they're, they're tall enough. So there is a, there is a, a plan to, to basically uh, uh, start to, to change out all those meters. We, we haven't really taken the approach of, of changing out all the meters by making a bulk purchase. And replacing meters that, that are working, that are still transmitting. So essentially, we have right now. In our trucks, we have a, a receiver that picks up the radio signal from, from the three G A M R. And it picks up the, the signal from the four G A M I. But, but we are kind of working to phase out the three G as the, as those three Gs are failing. And we know that we need to replace it. We're replacing it with the four G. Um, right now, uh, we are also asking uh, all the developers that are coming in. Whether it's uh, uh, commercial, whether it's residential, to install four G A M I meters since, since we kind of do have that plan. To face out the three G and essentially read these meters with the infrastructure that we plan to install. Um, if we wanted to. To say, hey, how many, how, how much would it take for us to? Buy one bulk of meters so that we change all the meters in the system? We, we issue one contract right now to basically take care of, of all the remaining three G meters, whether they're working or not working. That, that would be about four thousand meters. Now that has a significant cost associated with that, that uh, we haven't really looked at. Um, uh, whether it's in the rates, whether we were able to absorb that, that, um, that, that financial impact. So, so our plan has really been to, to face them out as they're, as they're failing to communicate. So that we get the most out of the meter, the three G, and then we change it. When we know we gotta put in a new one. So that's kind of been our, our approach. So right now, um. Unless, unless I, you know, I, I, I hear otherwise, uh, the plan is to again, change them as they're failing. Um, this was, I, I think we had a good opportunity here because with the ARPA dollars. Um, that were made available. We did have the ability to use those ARPA funds to make these types of purchases. So, so one of the things that we put in there was. Basically to use the ARPA money uh, to at least capture uh, this, this particular purchase of meters. At the next council meeting, I'm gonna bring a contract forward. Uh, to award the construction contract that's gonna install the base stations and the repeaters. Um, I, I don't plan to, uh, probably after that, um, we still have about. Around maybe another thousand that still need to be purchased for us to change out. Uh, the ones that, that are also still not communicating, but, but again, that um, that doesn't mean that they're not working. Doesn't mean that they're not, uh, they're not able to produce a, a consumption. They are. It just requires us to. Send out all the operators to take reads by hand. And so, so it, it adds, uh, it adds more, more legwork and I think what we're trying to do is. Was, we're trying to reduce that, but uh, but, but there is, we, we will continue. Uh, over, over time to, to change out these meters as they, as they fail.
Okay, fair. Thank you. You know, I, I do think that's something that we need to start considering though. Is, you know, what I hear from, from many employees is that they're working with a lot of dated equipment. And at some point, we're gonna have to evaluate, you know, what we need to renew and really come up with the, with the long-term plan. You know, to start, you know, making these purchases and not have to do it upfront or not have to do it when, you know, things fail as well. Thank you, Castle.
Thank you.
All of that is tied into water rate increases.
Yeah, you know, Mayor, and thank you for adding that, you know, if I could just, if I could just add that. You know, we haven't had a, we had, we haven't had a water rate increase since twenty, twenty fifteen. Um, and so that, you know, that's, that's not normal for, for, for a water entity to not. Have rate increases for, you know, almost eight years. So, so, so though, you know, that does an, that, that does have a direct impact on. On, on how much flexibility we have to, to make purchases.
Well, that would be a policy discussion. Maybe the next administration may wanna raise the water. So. All right, with that, uh, we have a. Answered the questions. Can I get a recommendation to answer the consent calendar or move the consent calendar? Your motion approved?
I'll second.
There's a motion by council member of Mayor Protim Gonzalez and second by council member. Delgado, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. We'll move on. Item number thirteen, approve the cooperative agreement for a Grito. Event between the city of Coachella, the Greater Coachella Chamber of Commerce de la Mundo, the Mexican Consolado. City.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm sharing my screen now so that I can. Go through the presentation with you. Um, this agreement, we last did this agreement, I believe, is two thousand nineteen. Um, and have it not been able to revisit it due to the challenges um, posed by COVID. This is our largest city-led effort um, on city events. We. We average between fifteen to twenty thousand attendees throughout the event. The event is usually. Uh, either the weekend prior or the weekend after the Grito, which is September sixteenth. And it's usually from three to ten PM at Rancho Las. And it's usually from three to ten P M at Rancho Las Fuertes Park. Um, this cooperative agreement has been the 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 mechanism that we've been able to utilize and the partnerships. We've been able to. Um, leverage in the delivery of this event as it takes um, resources from a variety of partners in order to deliver such a large event. Um, the chamber. Is one of the four partners in this agreement. Um, they provide the insur- uh, they provide insurance, special event insurance for the event. They provide security personnel for the event, they manage the informational booths. We anticipate between forty to fifty uh, sponsorships and informational booths this year. They do pull and operate the beer garden for the event, and they share in a quarter of the cost for the sound and stage. Telemundo um. Has been the partner that secures the entertainment for the event. They secure the headliners as well as um, a local artist. That usually kicks off the event at the other part of the eve uh, the day. They secure, um, they will be working to secure stage sponsor to hopefully drop down the cost. That is borne by the chamber and the city for the cost of the stage sound. And um, the all the paneling, the. Um, the screen panels that are pr- provided and project. The the stage activities. They also provide all the advertisement costs and all the promotional. Um, components that advertise this event through a multi. Faceted work, um, media through radio, through T V, through social media. Um, and they also provide the master ceremonies as well as the DJ for the event. The city of Coachella's uh, components identified in the agreement. Um, is that we do provide and manage the kids own area and all the activities. And rentals and um, other components related to that section of the park for the event, we also in this. Um, in this agreement would manage the food vendors. And uh, for the V I P area as well as the food vendors for the event. Uh, would provide. Three quarters of the cost of. The sound and stage, I'm sorry, that is a typo, it's three quarters. Uh, the chamber front provides one quarter. And the utilities for the event, so power, water. Any gray water components that correspond to the food bending. Um, we would provide that and have historically, we would provide traffic control and parking assistance. Um, rentals for the V I P area, for the public area, for shading. For vendors um, and fencing. Uh, the Mexican consul has been our partner, as this is a the Grito event, they always provide the ceremony and Grito and any components. Um, correspondent there too. And the budget that we estimate for the city's collaboration this year. Um, seen here, these are the primary factors is a lot of the shade structures that are needed for the event. Stage sound lighting and L E D screens, power, water. Gray water, um, basically utilities correspond to the event. Parking and traffic control, fencing, kid zone. And the food for the V I P area, which amounts to approximately a hundred thousand dollars for this. Uh, the city's share of the event. The other partners shares, um. Telemundo is estimating around eighty thousand in their contribution to the event. And the chamber usually um. Is basically as they are a nonprofit, the um, the revenues that they. Gauge from the beer garden usually pay for the costs that were identified earlier that correspond to them as a partner. This um, has been our site plan, it's an older one, but it. Um, it is still kind of the layout that we do, so you'll see the V I P parking in the undeveloped part of the park. Um, and sorry, V I P parking is the paid part of the park that. Um, we are, we do use for parking and then the. Undeveloped part of the park, we use that for all of the public parking as well as how we access the stage for our artists. Um, and then we have the info booths on one side, the. Food vendoring on the opposite side and. The kid zone and usually that open space looks very open right now, but we end up. Having to use that space for some of the additional informational boost and sponsorships that we bleed into that area. And with that, that does um, complete my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions of council on this item.
Yeah, I I I definitely, Maritza, appreciate the fact that uh, that we're we're gonna go to Saturday, which is something that. We've always wanted, you know, and we were always on Sunday. Uh, I I know that the. That because we go to Saturday, it's gonna attract. A lot more folks and it'll be good. And then um. I I I think the one thing that that. That uh, that we've always, we we provide fencing, we put a lot of fencing up. And significant costs, and then I know during the the beer garden, there's fencing that we put for the beer garden too, but. I I I think it should just be a little bit more open and try to try to. Capture a little bit more beer sales, and the only reason I say that is uh. You know. Uh, the the chamber does use this as a fundraiser and they they fundraise, et cetera. And and I think that's good and and but if there's a. Like a, if if they're making, do we know that we audit like how much they're making and?
We do. And they usually, they usually break even um, after they pay for like the security costs and things of that nature in the. In the numbers they've shared with us in the past, they don't make a significant.
So they're breaking even at this.
They're breaking even, and we will um, to your point with regards to fencing, we are gonna make it. An open beer garden, so the entire venue is the beer garden essentially, so there will not be the fencing for like a specific area only for beer. Consumption.
Yeah, uh, great, great, uh, you know, thank you, Meritza, I think, you know, it's great, we're planning ahead and uh, getting it ready. Um, yeah, I think uh, for my 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 thing, I and I'll follow up with you, I just diversify the music. To have more genres that, you know, people Mexico, we celebrate in Mexico. Um, anyways, I've had a lot of fun in the past as an attendee. And uh, look forward to, you know, the celebration. Um, and uh, you know, we've just had a lot of great turnout in these last few events, uh, including the Manetti Festival. So I think we should plan for, you know, just a little bigger than before. Uh, for the reason being that, you know, Mayor mentioned being Saturday and then just go sort of excited to come out and have a good time in community and so. Um, we're uh, we're glad to support this and make it happen for residents.
Thank you.
Maritza, uh. And so, and I might have not um, understood it correctly, but do we make any? Do we make any money off of this event?
No, this event is a um, one hundred percent free to the public, the parking is free. Their entrance is free, so we don't make any money on this event.
Not even from the from the sales, from the beer sales or the liquor sales uh, vendors that are out there?
No, um, all the sponsorships that are acquired through um, Telemundo's efforts are used to pay for their costs for the artists. Um. Primarily goes to that, then the beer sales component is really used to pay for the security that goes that corresponds with that feature. So they're required to have fourteen security officers for the event. That they provide through their their disagreement.
I I like the event, I know it's it's our most, you know, it's our largest attended event, you know, I don't like that it's a hundred thousand dollars for us. You know, it's it's a, that's a huge cost, and there's always so many things I can think of that we can do with that money. I know it's something that our residents uh, enjoy. And honestly, I think we have a lot of attendees that are, you know, from outside the city. That attend the event. Yeah, so hopefully, you know, as they're coming in, they're visiting some of the downtown restaurants and shopping locally. And then at where at least making some of the um, loss from there. That's all my comments, thank you.
If there's no more comments, motion approved.
Just one, Maritza, did we consider going to eleven o'clock?
Uh, we usually, to be fair, Mayor, we usually run a little late. So they usually wrap up around ten thirty. Um, but I I can relate the request, um. We have not finalized the lineup because usually they wait a little bit closer to see uh, where all the groups are coming and going from so that we pick up. In route and we kind of get a better deal basically with regards to the price of the group that performs. Um, but we can definitely push it a little bit further if if there are appropriate number of. Artists that we can lock in.
Good.
Uh, Maritza, I do have one question for the vendors that we're securing, um, are they local?
For the food vendors?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are going to take an approach of R F P. Um, to, we're gonna do a combination this year of food trucks, which will be. Uh, food trucks that are already registered in our county. Um, to be able to sell, and then we will also do an R F P. Um, in the next couple of weeks that'll be released that will. Um, then do a lottery approach to selecting those that reply to the R F P for selection to participate in this event.
I think to council member.
Excuse me, and then for Coachella businesses. Are we, how many Coachella businesses have we secured in the past? I mean, I know that they're they're local vendors, but. You know, I'm talking about specifically about Coachella businesses that I would feel much more comfortable with them being secured. So that I know that we're we're paying the one hundred thousand dollars, that at least it's coming back. To our businesses.
Understood, and we always give priority to Coachella.
Yeah, I I I wanna just echo those that sentiment. Uh, that that Coachella businesses should be prioritized. Uh, I have nothing against anyone from outside, but. It's our Coachella businesses, our chamber and the city are trying to support. And so I I I wanna just lend that support, and I get it. Food trucks are great, there are a lot of food trucks same from here, and so I I just wanna make sure that that Coachella businesses give priority.
Will do.
And if we can, honestly, I mean, I would like to see more than half, you know, so. And again, it it is just because it's such a huge cost to us. That obviously, you know, all of us are paying into. And so, again, I mean, if there's a way that we can at least have more than half of the vendors be Coachella. City of Coachella businesses. Um, I would feel much more comfortable with that.
We'll do our best to make sure that the word gets out to our local businesses using the chamber and other outlets.
Thank you.
We should probably mandate it though. I mean, the best is cool, but. You know, a mandate over sixty percent Coachella businesses is better. And so I I'll ask council if you could, if you could adjust your. Recommendation and ensure that sixty percent of the vendors are local from the city of Coachella.
Yeah, make a motion with the amendment to uh, ensure that sixty percent of vendors for the Grito event are from Coachella.
One second.
Another second.
Okay, motion.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second.
Second.
By uh, Mayor Protem Gonzalez, can we get a roll call please?
Uh, council member Delgado.
Aye.
Council member Galarza.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez.
I move forward now on public hearing, this is a Tripoli mixed use project, adopt ordinance number eleven ninety three and resolution twenty. Twenty two dash forty eight approving the change of zone. Uh, Gabriel.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Have the representation for this item. So the this item is for the Tripoli mixed use projects. And uh, it consists of entitlements for mixed use development of a hundred eight. Apartment units and to retail spaces on two point eight acres, the applicant is Chelsea Investment Corporation. Here's a vicinity map that shows an aerial of the site. Again, it's two point eight acres at the northeast corner of Caesar Chavez and Baghdad Avenue. Uh, here's also a picture of the site. Um, shown from the street level. Uh, the site is surrounded by existing development, on the south side, there is a neighborhood market. Uh, to the east, you have residential neighborhood. To the north, you have another project that was developed by uh, Chelsea. And that's the Pueblo Viejo Villas. Uh, another apartment and uh, mixed use project into the to the west, you have a commercial development. Here's the location highlighted in the red dashed marks, uh, this is. An image from the Pueblo Viejo revitalization plan that kind of shows. A schematic of what the Pueblo Viejo district could look like in the future, so this would be uh, a project that would fill that area. This is the site plan, so there are two buildings that are proposed, uh, one of the buildings, building A is a three story building. Uh, forty nine thousand seven hundred ninety four square feet. Uh, in that building, there would be forty four apartment units, uh, six hundred fifty two square foot multi purpose room. And ground floor retail, and that would be one thousand eight hundred five square feet. So that building would be at the corner of Sixth Street and Tripoli. The second building is a four story building, seventy one thousand square feet. It would have sixty four apartment units. It would have a one thousand two hundred ninety six uh, square foot community room. And ground floor retail of one thousand four hundred thirteen square feet. And that would be at the northeast corner of Sessa Chavez and and Baghdad Avenue. There would be an outdoor top lot, and as you could see from the site plan, a lot of the parking would be um. On site internal to the project between the two buildings, uh, but with this project, they are proposing. To construct on street parking on Baghdad Avenue and Tripoli, uh, so there would be forty one spaces. Diagonal parking that would be created that could support the project, but also would be public parking available to the public. This is building A, and this shows you um, the floor plan. Uh, and so this would be at that corner of Tripoli and Sixth Street and see the retail. Um, on the first floor as well as the proposed units. Uh, building B would have the retail uh, at the corner of the building on the first floor, uh, the community. Room on the first floor. And uh, and this is the building that would have the the elevators um, at the lobby. And there are different unit types that are proposed, and they would range from five hundred eighty one square feet to a thousand sixty one square feet. So there would be one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom options. This is, this would be an affordable housing project, um, development, and there are. Fifty eight units that are proposed to be very low income, and then fifty units that would be low income. Here's a perspective view of the project looking from the southeast corner of Sessa Chavez and Baghdad Avenue. So this is the uh, building B, which is four stories, and you could see the ground level. Uh, retail, and so this is built up to the street level. Uh, and so what this really um, corresponds with the city's vision for Pueblo Viejo. Which is to bring buildings to the street, create an active and dynamic pedestrian environment um, in the downtown. Uh, and you can see the diagonal parking that they propose on on Baghdad Avenue. Um, and this project would be developed with architectural design, which is Spanish colonial revival, so we have a lot of that architecture. Uh, in the downtown area. And that's characteristic of um, clay tile roofs uh, or concrete tile roofs. Um, white stucco and um, tile elements and wrought iron that you see on the balcony.
Or orientate me a little bit, Gabe, so where do you're talking, this is. Where the diagonal parking, is that Tripoli right there?
That would, that would be Baghdad Avenue.
That's Baghdad, yeah, okay, that's.
The market, yes.
Market, and then that corner that we're seeing, that would be on the corner of Sessa Chavez.
Mm-hmm, got you. So you would have the the retail component there. Uh, but you could also see it's also connected with the community room, so that whole length that you see, it's kind of shaded gray. Isn't entirely retail, uh, it is also including a community room for the entire development. Um, as you could see in this uh, elevation. Uh, so that there are, there is ground floor re- um, sorry, uh, residential. And so a lot of the access is internal to the development. Uh, what we did include is the condition for the project that there be more of an interface. With those first floor residential units, so that there's external access, because we think that would activate the. The public realm, and uh, so it is a condition that we think would be a good idea, and it's kind of something that. Occurred with the Pueblo Viejo Villas, and so we think that would be a a good. Uh, adjustment to the project that's in the the conditions of approval. So here are the other elevations, so the Sessa Chavez frontage, you could see at the top, so again, you could see the ground floor retail. Uh, but the ground floor isn't entirely retail, it also includes. Some residential units on the ground floor, you could see the top lot that is on the left hand side of that elevation. Um, the other elevation is Baghdad Avenue frontage, uh, so that frontage you were talking about right across from the neighborhood market. Uh, you could see um, some of that retail, but most of that elevation is gonna have uh, residential units. The Tripoli way frontage, um, so this the elevation, you can see there's 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 a lot of architectural variation with this development, a lot of pop outs. Along the wall, uh, some tower features that. Um, are kind of elements that are encouraged in the Pueblo Viejo revitalization plan. And then Sixth Street frontage, um. Uh, as you could tell, Sixth Street, it's either Travis, there's another commercial development that exists, so this actually hugs around that commercial development. So what it does here on Sixth Street, it actually creates the entire frontage on Sixth Street to be a retail frontage. Uh, here's the materials board, so there's a variety of materials proposed, I mean, it would include tile, some brick elements. And concrete reptiles. And soft deal tile that would be used as well. And you could see this elevation looks a little bit different than this one, so this was based on some feedback that staff provided to the applicant. So you could see that finial or that spire on top of the the tower feature, that's a little bit different. And encouraging more of that stacked reptile that's characteristic of Spanish colonial revival architecture. Uh, here's the landscape plan, so you know, um, this shows the trees that are proposed, uh, they do propose palm trees along Caesar Chavez Street. We did encourage that to change with the conditions of approval, so that there would be more shade trees to avoid that heat island effect. Uh, but actually what we want to do is create the trees so they're closer to the curb, kind of like these pictures. So on the right, you could see this is the Veterans Park, the left is another example. That shows kind of what what palm trees could look like, so instead of bringing it on the other side of the sidewalk. You would have it near the street, what that would do for the pedestrians is provide more shade walking along the street. And these are examples of the landscape trees, so on Sessa Chavez, we would have a combination. Uh, date palms and then the Hong Kong orchid that's displayed here. And here's the plant palette. Uh, as far as zoning consistency, so this development.
Question on that, when you turn into Sixth Street. We're using Chinese elm and Sixth Street, that's all. So we'll have that on Sixth Street, if we go, I mean, as such a Travis, you're recommending recommending a a different type of. Plant, but on Sixth Street, you're going to keep consistent with what we have, right?
Yeah, if if that's what the council would like, then we can definitely do that. So right now, I think they have date palms right now, so if we want to include. The the elm, then right now would be the time to recommend that.
Uh, but I think it looks, just to kind of keep the consistency of what we're doing. You know, I think, I mean, there's good examples here in front of City Hall where we have the elm, palm tree, elm palm tree. And I just kind of keep that consistency going all the way through Sixth Street, uh, my suggestion.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's a good idea, and I would just include that with the recommendation. I think the Hong Kong Orchid was recommended on on Sessa Chavez because it also adds some color to.
Yeah, I agree.
Gabriel, is there a reason for the palm trees? Do you have any palm trees here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
Few, very few.
Yeah, they're kind of like mixed in, so it's kind of staggered with the development, so.
DPS or something there. It's all throughout.
So this would be a little bit of a departure from the Pueblo Viejo Villas where it's entirely palm trees on that frontage. This would mix um, the shade trees within it. Uh, as far as zoning consistency is in the commercial general zone, and um, we've kind of brought this up before. It's not necessarily consistent with the general plan, so general commercial does not allow mixed use development, so that's why they need this zone change. To allow for the plenty of development. Uh, this is the location on the Pueblo Viejo revitalization plan. So there are some development standards in that plan that we have not adopted or codified yet. So what we've asked them to do is include some of those standards in their plan year development, which they are doing. So they've included some of these standards that allow for more flexibility and accommodate their development. Uh, as well as that flexibility for parking, so in that plan. It says that you can use on-street parking to satisfy your parking requirement, which, you know, staff would support. As far as development project standards, it would. It would allow for density of up to thirty-eight dwelling units per acre, the maximum height of sixty feet. Uh, this project would be exempt from CEQA according uh, as an infill development project, but also under SP thirty-five streamline for affordable housing. No further sequel analysis would be required, Plan Commission did require a a request of modification to condition nine. And this is regarding elevator for building A, that's the three-story building. Uh, so originally, there was a condition that staff had that was a little bit more flexible with regards to the elevator based on. Uh, financing and uh, if if the developer could accommodate the elevator. Plan Commission wanted something more affirmative that did require the elevator, so the conditions modified before the city council. Uh, so staff recommendation is that the city council adopt the ordinance one-one-nine-three recommending the adoption of the change of zone. And the plan unit development, but also resolution uh, doc approving this conditional use permit and the architecture review for this project. Uh, that's the end of my staff report, uh, but there was some communication provided by Chelsea, and that. Was regards to some of the architectural uh, design elements of the project that, uh, you know, I I think a lot of it's. Uh, requesting more flexibility with respect to those elements that might be a little more costly for the development and. Uh, maybe they could speak to it because the applicant is in the audience, so I'm available answering any questions you have.
Thank you, Gabriel, I'm going to. At seven twenty-four. And uh, does anybody in the audience who'd like to address the city council on this matter, now's your time.
Good evening, Colleen Edwards with Chelsea Investment Corporation. Good to see the mayor and council members about this project, it's great on the heels of a successful effort just down the street to be talking about more. Affordable housing in the city, so that's fantastic, um, the concerns. Uh, we've got a great design, it looks great, it's it's accommodating a lot of units, we like that. Uh, it's been great working with the city, we've got a new architect on the team, it's got a new vision that's going to add some. Some variety to the area still staying within the plan. So, uh, but our concerns that Gabriel mentioned is just adding flexibility to the conditions so that we can design the project to meet the financial resources. The most interesting issue is always the elevators, so the elevators, it's two different buildings. Um, they weren't able to be connected, so we weren't able to do a single elevator bank that would accommodate both buildings. The building in question is a smaller one, so it's just forty-four units. The upper floors have fifteen units on floor two and fifteen units on floor three. So it's a very small number of units that we're asking for um, to not have the elevator access to. So with the demand on the previous project, uh, there were over four thousand people on the interest list. So we would just be looking for fifteen people who would who could. Deal with the third floor condition with no elevator, so that's why we're asking about that. And to restore the language perhaps that allows flexibility where we can continue working on it if the finances permit. On the design issues, we just wanted also, as Gabriel mentioned, flexibility in the language, since some of the details are expensive. And they weren't included in the previous project, which was uh, turned out looking pretty good. So we didn't want to uh, state definitively that we could do those when um, when flexibility might. Make it a better financial package. So for example, window recesses in the previous project were done more with foam detailing. Uh, but there were some windows also that were recessed, so if we can kind of uh, work together on making the design as best we can. Uh, to meet the uh, meet the financing resources, that would be great. Time frame, if everything moves forward, we're looking at a bond application in July. Uh, which would be awarded soon thereafter, and we should be able to get going early next year on the project. Uh, we are already awarded four million dollars of infill infrastructure grant funds that help with. Uh, offsite costs and other features for the project. Along the way, someone mentioned the possibility of design. Um, kind of artistic features that could be included in the project and possibly funded from our art funds with the city. I don't know if that's possible or not, if it was a possibility, we could look at what could be included. And all funding does help the project get its overall funding package passed. Also, we're looking for a name for the project, so if you have an idea of something that would appeal to you, that would be good too. I'm here with my colleague Dave Davis, who's been taking the head on all the drawings and coordination and all that type of thing, David. Do you have any comments or?
No, I just want to say thank you, Gabriel.
We're in good shape and we're available if you have questions for us.
Council. Is anyone else in the audience that'd like to address this? Online?
Nobody online.
All right. I'm gonna close up here at seven twenty-eight.
The elevator, since I'm the one that always has made so much noise about the elevator on the other project. So you're proposing that the smaller structure not have it, but the one that has four will have it. And the one that has um, a smaller structure, you said, has a total of thirty units that you would need to. You said, you said fifteen and fifteen, so I'm assuming that's thirty.
Yeah, second floor is fifteen units, third floor also.
Got it, okay. Understood, very different from the previous.
I uh. I I I I'm a big believer that if we can do it once, we can do it the second time and we can do it better. Because your contractors. They know the area now, they've got a little bit more familiarity and they're going to be able to draw efficiencies and and. And frankly, I think that design is is excellent, so Gabriel, thank you for incorporating all the the Pueblo Viejo. Features and design, and so I I I think on that standpoint, like, you know. There's, there's something to be said about, you know, enhancing this area and making it feel. Nice and and you know, if I can just kind of. Compliment the count, the 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 comments of the council member of Galarza that. It said that he he keeps having to tell his friends that these are not million-dollar apartments, but rather. Look like a million dollars, but are for working-class people and and I think they deserve quality. And so I I'm uh, I if 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 what we're asking for is is the ability to use foam and achieve some of that. I think that's okay, but I think at the same time. Gabe, I would look to you to kind of figure out like, well, how can we really maximize the window detail that you need, and I mean, do you have any suggestions and? Outside of that, I think everything else is, we keep it, keep it the way you are, the roof lines, the the rebar, the, I'm sorry, the the. The uh. When you go outside. Yeah, kind of the 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 iron work and the is the tile work, I think that's. That's all, that's, that's beautiful stuff, that's good, 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 good quality stuff that is really going to help to anchor. And frankly, you know, put a lot of pressure on that corner building. Whenever develops and have something dynamic coming into the community too. So I I I I really kind of just want to, I want to get one shot to do this. And this building is going to be here for at least fifty-five years based off your comments, so you know, I I I. I think that's wrong. Gabe, if you have some ideas, but outside of that, like.
Yeah, Mary, if you want me to address that, I I did watch um, the Pueblo Viejo Villa site with Colleen. Yeah. So there's, you know, we were looking at what they did there, you know, I I I don't think. Doing the foam pop-outs for the entire project, it would be a good idea, I think it it needs to be a combination. That could work, uh, I think there's, you know, the. The windows and doors that are set back in the balconies, maybe you don't have to do those recesses. But the ones that are up against Sessa Chavez Street or along Sixth Street, that's the most important. Uh, the way the conditions are stated right now, everything is shell, you shall incorporate this. So if the council wants to allow for more of that flexibility, we would have to adjust that condition regarding those enhancements.
And so we could, we can put out the discretion of our planning director. That would give you that ability to kind of. You know. Work with them and do that, I I I frankly, Gabe, I I trust your ability and I've seen your taste and how the your buildings come out. And they're nice, I mean, case in point, the. Folks know that Gabe was very instrumental in the dialysis center and how that ultimately came out and it looks really good. Now, obviously, somebody broke your fountain, but. It's not your fault, you know. But but nonetheless, I I I think that you have a really good eye for that. Outside of that. That's the extent to where I want to go, where we, I think, where, you know. Just maintain the quality, there's a lot of. There's a lot of good buildings coming, and then obviously the county building, the remodel that's coming to the fire station, I see, that's. My plan on that. The uh. The school. The school looks really excellent too. I think Chelsea, this would be great for your portfolio.
Okay.
Again.
Gabriel, um, I'm confident that you'll be able to come up with something to drive down the cost for the. Products, but for the, what were the reasons for the for the planning commission? Changing the the wording for the elevator?
Yeah, I just, the Plan Commission, they were very intent on having the elevator. Now, it wasn't a unanimous decision, so there was an abstention to that. But um. But I think they felt that. I think this came up with the Pueblo Viejo Villas project before. That an elevator would be needed, especially for those that live on the second and third floor. So uh, so I know the applicant did make the argument that. You know, this would only affect the second, third floor applicants, um, but the Plan Commissioner. Still felt, you know, they need to keep that standard of having the elevator, even if it's a development that's three stories.
And what are the costs to the elevator, what are the savings for not putting an elevator, Colleen?
Hard to say, but uh. Could be easily half a million dollars or more.
There's a lot more maintenance as well.
Thirty minutes, so it's really cost-cutted, you know. Using it versus this, the other complex was every single.
And there's nowhere else where you can pull some of these, I mean, you're you're talking about now maybe a little bit over half a million with the maintenance, right? So we're looking at six hundred thousand, and there's nowhere else that you can pull or save in costs to make up that.
We can continue looking at it, another thing we could do is just restore the. The language that was a little more flexible and then. So. We are in a climate of construction cost escalation, I'm sure. Pressure is slow in April, so that's good news. With everything, we are trying to uh. That what the company was saying is creating lots and lots of housing opportunities. Try to right-size the costs, and we do have considerable number of three-story buildings that are. Yeah, well, the lower cost and what they're saying is the financing. That, you know, more efficient your costs, the more competitive you are against other applications. We are geared up for July, but it's not, um, not, no, not a pressure thing, because we're competing against other projects. Scoring as such, and we don't know what we're going to be facing tomorrow, but.
Yeah, I I I agree, I think we need to look at ways that we keep an elevator, I think, you know, I think of. You know, my father, uh, last year had back surgery. Uh, from a worksite incident, and if he or someone like him lived in the second floor. They wouldn't be able to access their apartment if there's not a elevator. Because unless we, you know, somehow carry the ability, you carry someone like that, and. You know, they could hurt their backs, or I, you know, obviously not only because for people, but it's just. You know, it just, it's just, it's just something that. You know, we need to be accessible to all of our residents, and it's tough to like, now how do we like choose like? Who gets in one side or like, you know, now we can, you know, exclude people with some different abilities from that one. Second uh, building versus the other one. Yeah, I think we we let, we we know, I don't know how we, you know, to be flexible, look for funding, but. I think it's important to do included. For many reasons. For many reasons, but more for just accessibility.
I, I don't have no doubt that we can find that money. We've been good at helping you all find that money. And, and I, I, I think, you know, if you're looking at the, the ratio. You know, and, and, and being competitive, if we find more money. Then that'll help us stay efficient with, with, you know, this scoring criteria and. I guess that's where the commitment's gotta be, Gabe, is that we call our good old friend Mike Walsh. And have a conversation with him and, and say, hey, can you? Can you make it, you know, my five instead of one? And, uh, and there can be some consideration there at that point. I, 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 um. My, my thing is, is, you know, obviously we've, we've now. This project could be number three for, for the city and you all. And, oh yeah. That's right. You know, uh, and so I, I think that, you know, we, we, we gotta look at this as partners and, and yet at the same time. There is an urgency for more affordable housing right now. And, and, and to be able to be up in the ground or at least start construction first couple of months of next year is. And then, you know. Eighteen months from then have a completely transformed downtown. That's, that's pretty cool. I mean, one of the things that we haven't mentioned. Is that the, the Pueblo Viejo plan has been on the books since like nineteen seventy-three. I mean, Gabe, you, you showed me some iterations of the plan. Yeah, going back to like seventy-three, seventy-fives and, and you know, and. It was just a plan. And now we're actually like realizing that, that vision. And, and I think that's good and I, and we got momentum, so we should keep it, you know, and so. I think the commitment for us is to kind of just keep things as is and. And, uh, work with our city manager, Gabe, and others to try to fill that gap.
Agreed, and I, I don't wanna do anything to delay this, you know, development further either, and I'm confident. Colleen is, you know, what you have done. This isn't, these aren't easy decisions to make, especially when you're trying to find half a million dollars and where you can cut half a million. And so, um, I agree is that we explore all, you know, partnerships and collaborations if available. You know, so we can move this forward and, and if there's another avenue that we can explore to get that elevator in that, you know, in the last. Building, then. Let's see, yeah, there we should go.
Right, is there a motion?
Well, how do we properly, uh, you know, to give, give her some of that flexibility and?
So there, there's two things that identified in, in the, the presentation. One is the condition about the elevator, right? So the, the question is affirming plan commissions. The shell language for the elevator versus, which was more flexible if the financing is available. The other is. I don't know, mission number, but I would just say, you know, allowing the development service director or staff to be able to work with the applicant on architectural enhancements. And I think that's all we need, we really need to do.
No, there's one more.
What, the landscaping?
Those are trees and.
Oh, the land, yeah, if you want, if you're trying to change anything there, if, if you're talking about the elm trees on Sixth Street. Or anything changes in the palm trees.
He said with the rest of the.
Sixth street, yeah.
Uncertain about the, um. Amending the language regarding the elevators at this point, given that we, you know, like to. Try to find more money. Is it possible down the road, Gabriel, that they can come back if. Aren't able to ensure additional funding to, um, change the language so that you do have flexibility regarding the, um. The elevator?
They can't come back. Uh, the other thing is the council is gonna decide, uh, to have language that they shall add the elevator. You also might wanna add the flexibility for them. I, I don't know if they would add additional floors, right? So considering that if they have, have a second elevator, would they wanna add additional units? I'm not sure if that would. But I would hate to kind of handcuff them by not allowing them to do that because then you'd have to come back for that as well.
So you're recommending that we not accept the, um. The recommendation?
Oh, staff is just supportive of adding the elevators to both buildings.
Okay, okay, which is, I'm not sure, okay.
Good. I will make a motion with three points Gabriel just mentioned.
And those are to reaffirm the planning commission's decision to allow staff flexibility and the architecture rendering with the window treatments. And then as well as address the consistency with the elms and the trees on Sixth Street. Just to reflect that that is your motion, correct, Councilman?
What the flexibility on, on, on the first point with the elevator too?
Okay.
Yeah.
Our second time.
Just clarity, uh, on the elevator, are we clear on that?
So, so instead of a, instead of a must, I think what Gabriel mentioned is that we, 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 we include it, you know, but. Since, how do you, are you recommended? To allow that flexibility, say they wanna do the fourth floor, you know, I'm not saying they are, but.
Oh, okay. The, what I mean by that is that if the city council is going to adopt the condition that the plan commission approved, right? You shall have the elevator. I would say you allow the flexibility for the applicant to adjust their plans. So that we can find a substantial performance, but if they're gonna add another floor, we would work with them to make that happen instead of having to come back to plan commission council.
Okay, that's fine.
There's a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgado?
Aye.
Councilmember Galarza?
Aye.
Councilmember, Mayor Potem Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mayor Hernandez?
I move forward now on public comments, so to address the city council's preparation. Authority of any item of interest. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address the council? Anyone online?
I don't see any hands on, on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to council comments reports and miscellaneous committees, councilmember.
Service, was that me?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, good, um. I have a, my committee meeting tomorrow, so I have no report on the Energy and Environment Committee for SEVAG. I'll be brief. I wanted to, uh, wish all the, you know, mothers, uh, happy Mother's Day. And for all Mexican and Mexican-American moms, ladies and modest, I mean. You know, what a, I spent some time with my partner, my fiance, with other my kids and with my, uh, with my mom and. My suyra and yes, and so, you know, just good to be around family. You know, wanted to thank staff and, you know, we haven't met since the Dia de El Niño and I think, you know, I was able to. Drive by, uh, for a brief time after another event, uh, that one future was hosting and on my way into. Where we said for professional morals, memorial services, but I got a chance to be there for about half an hour. And I thought, you know, just the amount of resources that were available to residents and the amounts, you know, youth that were there present and families. Even the train, I think, you know, you all did a great job and, uh, working with the partners. And making it, you know, just a very joyful event for our residents. So applaud everyone in that. Had a great opportunity, you know, on Monday to attend the Pueblo Vieja, Pueblo Viejo, um, apartment. Ribbon cutting ceremony. It was great to know that, um, there's people living there already and hearing the testimony of, uh. Of, of our, of our residents and I had a buddy of mine who lived, who grew up here on, in Old Town Coachella. And I posted that we were there and he, and he responds, uh, FYI, I also just moved in. To those apartments and I'm like, that's pretty cool, you know, I, um, that, you know, not only folks, you know, were helping people from other areas, but people that grew up here in Coachella. Are now, you know, able to, you know, move into those very nice apartments and I thought that was very, very cool. I, I asked him for an invitation to the house party, but yeah, I think I'm unread, so follow up. Aside of that, I spent some, some, uh, yesterday afternoon with, uh, uh, Leah Espinoza. And, um, he shared, you know, obviously we walked around the boxing club as usual, saying hi to a lot of the athletes and parents and. So I, you know, wanna bring up for the, uh, proclamation for one of the youth that recently, uh, won nationals and I would touch and give her about it. So we could bring her forth in the next city council meeting. Additionally, uh, took a tour of outside the space and he shared one of the concerns, uh, with me when the landscaping is. We have a tree that sheds a lot of, of leaves into their air conditioning system. And, uh, and, and so he shared, you know, that it'd be great if we could help with the, you know, it's our tree in Bucamol Park. And, but, um, but the branches go over the, the AC, their AC system. And he told me he's had to pay a lot of repairs for that AC system to always clean it out for all the leaves that go in. So see if, you know, I'll send you some pictures I took, Gabriel. If we could look at staff and see how we could, we could do to, I know it'll cost some money to take off some of those branches, but. It'll save money in the long run from, you know, damaging their air conditioning system that they have there. So, um, that's it for my report. I just wanted to, yeah, thank you all so much.
My comments, you know, I have quite a bit of comments regarding policies. That it's taking for policies to make it on the agenda. And I'll give you some examples, like the purchasing contract, it took almost a year, you know, for the, um. For the added environmental conditions in the heavy industrial zones, we're talking about a year. And, you know, and so I'm trying to understand why is it's taking so long to get things on the agenda? You know, like for today, we have, you know, two items on the agenda outside the consent calendar. You know, we've got decisions that we have to make on behalf of residents. You know, and, you know, additionally is that when we've attended the subcommittee meetings, you know, we also gave policy direction. And those haven't come through either. You know, one of our captains, uh, from our fire station reached out about, once again, about the opticom. And, and we have to remember that, you know, we have one fire station in the city of Coachella. You know, compared to the city of Indio, the city of La Quinta, the city of Palm Desert. You know, we're looking at population sizes like La Quinta, Palm Desert, which were similar to, they have many fire stations. So we have one fire truck engine or maybe two, but one fire station. So we have a very small team. And so when they come to us and they say that, you know, they need our assistance. You know, I think that we should explore every avenue to make sure that we're accommodating, you know, the needs that they're. That they're having issues with basically, or the issues, you know, the needs that they have. And so we gave direction in the last public safety subcommittee meeting and that hasn't come through. You know, I asked the city attorney to give me an update on it and he hasn't been communicated. About, uh, the direction that was given from that subcommittee meetings. So it's imperative, you know, that you're communicating with each other to get these items on the agenda. I know you have a lot of work, trust me, I know, you know, but when we're looking at a year out, that's way too long. Additionally, is I wanna talk about, once again, public information. And so I just wanna make sure that our executive team understands that when I request public information, you know. You have to turn that over. And so what I'm getting is that, you know, you have to discuss it with the city attorney. And so just so you know, the city attorney doesn't discuss any of this. I mean, there's no, I, I'm not sure where the miscommunication is or what the misunderstanding is. You know, but when I request public information, you know, you don't need to meet with the city attorney. You know, to get back to me on about how are you gonna proceed? It's public information. We work for a local government, this is a public agency, and so this is public information. And so once again, I'm gonna ask this to the attorney, you know, to, to meet in the next executive team meeting. Is that ensure that you're communicating, you know, what public information is and when you're involved and when you're not. Thank you. Um, and then lastly, you know, regarding the energy study session. I have to say that I went in there and I was really like a student because I didn't know any of that. You know, and I'm listening to city managers from the city of Indio and the city of La Quinta. And I'm listening to my colleagues, you know, in the city of Indio and in the city of La Quinta. And they were much more knowledgeable than I was, you know, so that let me know that they're having ongoing communication and conversations. And, and we had to take this very seriously. We're gonna run out of energy in ten years. You know, we have to have these conversations and I need to be educated and updated on what our options are. You know, whether that's, uh, you know, going in with the city of Indio, so we're gonna explore something, you know, on our own. I need to know what those options are and I need to know what those costs are. And so that also that I'm having those communications and those conversations, you know, with my colleagues in other cities as well. And so I know that we hired a consultant, you know, specifically for, uh, to help us with these energy matters and so. Uh, I thought that we're gonna be having meetings, you know, prior to that study session, we did not. And so I'm gonna ask, is that, that, you know, um, that he meet with each member of council? And really talk and get us updated on what's been discussed. And lastly, I want to, um. Congratulate our two employees in the back. Uh, can I have your names again? Jesus?
Jason Stevens.
And Jason Stevens. And so, uh, I met them in our, in our, when I was having some snacks in the back. And so also guys, you know, in the future is that let's, you know, let's introduce our new employees to the entire team. You know, because I'm passing by them, I don't even know they're city employees. And so if we can just give them that proper welcome, uh, moving forward with any new employees. And that's it for me, thank you.
On a different note. I wanna talk a little bit about the wonderful, um, different. Events that we've had and the great job that the staff has done. Starting with the, the Lotus Fuerta groundbreaking. That was an amazing event. The, um, of course, we're always so lucky to be in the presence of an icon, the Lotus Fuerta, so that was special. But it was a well-attended event and it was, um, very positive, very, um, exciting to see what's. Going to be happening in that area there. Also have, of course, Dia de los Niños, that was a beautiful event. There was a. A large amount of community, um. Partners there at the park. Um, I'm in social services and I deal with community partners every day, but I can tell you that I. Met, cause I went to every community, every stand that was there, so I'm in the same business of children. And I found some amazing resources, um, that I wasn't even aware of and I was, I was quite impressed with the amount of. Parent partners that were there, community resources. Um, that was a wonderfully well put together event. Marisa, Maritza, and the entire staff. And of course, we, uh, went to the Pueblo Viejo. Opening in that too was a, uh, exciting time in Coachella. When you have three, you know, events that are specific for the community to empower them to. Provide them with housing, you know, it is a, it's a good time in our city. It's a, it's a good time, um, in Coachella and, um, we continue to do the best work that we can and to partner with our staff. And, um. I would also encourage, um. If there's issues. With, between the council and the staff. That we do it like we normally do it in a professional setting, that we knock on the door of the city manager and we sit down and we have a conversation. Or that we knock on the door of the. Of the, um, count of the, of our council and that we have a discussion. I, I don't think it's necessary to be scolded up. In a public setting like this, I just, I just don't see the productiveness of that behavior. So that's just another suggestion that I'd like to put forward. I've had ongoing conversations.
Thank you, um. I, uh. I don't have a lot of comments, but then I do, I guess, but no, I just want, just one comment, Gabriel, and, and I've been really thinking through. You know, um. The. Just the need for housing and, and affordable housing and, and I think there's a kind of a misnomer and. In the community that somehow the city council. has the ability to control market cost of residential units. And the council doesn't have that ability. You know, that's a, it's a free market economy and a lot of, you know, costs and, and prices of homes is dictated by, by the market. But I think what the council does have an ability is housing type and, and housing size. And, you know, as, as, as development has come in, I've been really, you know, kind of just looking at what, what's occurring and, and a lot of the housing type and housing size is very kind of, it, it's, it's, it's two thousand and four, five, six, seven, two thousand kind of generated. It's, it's developers taking over track maps that, that were already cut and, and looking at refreshing those track maps and, and, and single family subdivisions. I think there's, there's, there's room and obviously it's great that these sub, these subdivisions are, are going to get bought and, and they're being bought and, and they're, um, and they're, they're moving forward, uh, uh, to my point here though, is that I think we have an opportunity and, and maybe calling for a, a housing conference led by the city in which we can kind of talk about affordability and yet at the same time, homeownership in a different manner. That's not just the same, most same, you know, kind of run of the mill track maps, you know, being kind of dictated or being led by, you know, public companies. And so I, I want to see if we can maybe sponsor or have a, a housing conference and we can really kind of put one together to think about housing type and to think about missing middle housing and to encourage and ask developers to come in and look at our city and look at a thousand square foot, two bedroom, you know, kid, you know, two bedrooms with, with a nice living room and, and a nice, you know, kitchen and, you know, maybe a ba- bathroom that, that allows for mar- you know, market entry to a generation of people who, who are saying that they're getting out, you know, out, out, uh, so where I'm looking for outbid or, or they're, they're not being able to enter the market. And it is progressive. It is something that I think that, that we can do particularly because of our demographics and particularly because I think that, we have the land and there's an interest. And so I, I want to just kind of put that on your radar. I want to challenge you to think about that. And, and there is an excess when it comes to, you know, or, or, uh, uh, our housing plan. And, you know, kind of the SCAC criteria, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a kind of a bold move in this, in this economy where what we're getting and what we're seeing is a lot of single family. But that, but at the same time, like I, I, I think the, the challenge we were going to be to, to think through, you know, what these types of communities can feel like and look like and, and then at the same time, think about who they're geared to. You know, I mean, we have a generation of people that looks like council member of the Larsa that are asking for housing. And, and, and they're very vocal, you know, they're very, and but at the same time, you know, they're, the, the type of amenities that these communities are going to need are, are, are something that, that I think they, they value. You know, and, and so, you know, parklets, um, business incubators, bars, so that they can kind of facilitate their own networking events and probably even gaming centers, but just thinking of housing in a different way. And I, and I think that's where our general plan and, and I think that's where like our leadership here can really kind of come forward and, and ask for, uh, and our demographic frankly can ask for, uh, like a different type. So I put that on your radar. It's really all I got to say. Everything else is like, you know, things are looking great in the city. You know, I, I know Andrew had talked about really identifying new roads that we need paving and neighborhoods that we want to tackle and we'll get, we'll get to that, but, but, but outside of, of everything else, you know, I, I, uh, my, my approach here has always been very like, what can we get done? From a very practical standpoint, you know, kind of just giving your, everybody giving yourself a high five for five minutes and then move forward to the next thing. And, and I think that's what's, you know, been a game changer for our community. And then being able to really transform the space. And so I want to keep that momentum. I just want to challenge staff, Gabriel, Dr. Martin, Gabe, to really think about housing in this time. So those are my comments and for yours, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only announcement we have, I have is, uh, the twenty-nine palms of Vanamish Indians contacted the city that are giving away free tickets for Michael Epps. If you're interested in getting those free tickets, please contact their host office at seven, six, zero, seven, seven, five, two, zero, six, six. That will be for this weekend, uh, May fourteenth, sorry.
Is that from where?
Open to the community, correct?
Yeah, it's open to the community. Any community member that wishes to get those free tickets, just contact them. They're giving away free tickets.
Thank you.